It's Clark time is 6:00 PM. I'm going to call this special meeting of council to order. The Town of Aurora acknowledges that the Anishinaabe lands on which we live and work are the traditional and treaty territory of the Chipewas of Georgina Island, as well as many other nations whose presence here continues to this day. As the closest First Nation community to Aurora, we recognize the special relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental stewards of these lands, and as a municipality, we join them in these responsibilities. We further acknowledge that Aurora is part of the treaty lands of the Mississaugas and Chipewas recognized through Treaty Number 13, as well as the Williams Treaties of 1923. A shared understanding of the rich cultural heritage that has existed for centuries, and how our collective past brought us to where we are today will help us walk together into a better future. Council, I need a motion to approve the additional delegations. This requires two thirds, correct, Mr. Clark? Simple majority fails?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The delegations would require labor of the procedure by law, which is always a two thirds vote.
Thank you. Someone like to move that? Counselor Thompson, secondary, Counselor Wees. Counselor Thompson, any question?
I do. I am. I'm supportive of allowing more delegates at tonight's meeting, but I think I would take this opportunity to remind the delegates to conduct themselves accordingly. We do have a code of conduct with respect to delegates, and we ask that you not make any detrimental, offensive, or insulting comments, or speak ill or malign the integrity of staff, the public, council, or members of committee, or any other external public agencies.
Counselor, Counselor Gallo?
Thank you. I'd also remind everyone that I'm sure you're going to do it as well, Mr. Mayor, that they should be speaking on the agenda item and nothing more, and I'm sure you'll stop them if they sway in any direction outside of that.
Counselor, I agree. We are here tonight to discuss the veto and whether the veto is upheld or whether it's overturned. We are not discussing any other matters, and I will be holding counsel to that same discussion points. I'll call the vote. It's on the scrap. Counselor Garner's, yes? That carries. Okay, motion to approve the agenda as amended. Counselor Gallo, Counselor Kim, any comments, questions on that? Call the vote. Counselor Garner? Counselor Garner's, yes? That carries. Any declarations of any interest? Seeing none. Move to delegations. First one, 5.1 Ken Chen, resident regarding item 6.1. Ken? Yep, come on up. Nope. But... But... I mean, thank you, everyone. I know hockey is our sport, and we'd like to jump over boards, but thank you. It's the first time I've ever seen that in council. Chen, welcome. You have five minutes and four years.
My name is Ken Chen. I'm from Ward 5, Town of Aurora. Honorable Mayor, counselors, staff, and Town of Aurora. Tonight, Aurora is under siege. The shelter proposal at Young Street is not just a bad decision, but is a full-blown attack on our community. Let's be clear. This proposal we're talking about today is attempting to ask York Region to resubmit a zoning application for an application that doesn't comply with Aurora's planning and has been rejected by York Region following necessary democratic process.
Point of order.
A thorough review and concluded.
Mr. Chen, point of order, Counselor Garner?
Point of order. Sorry, we're here to talk about the motion about strong mayor power, not about the shelter.
Yes.
Mr. Chen, if I can just get you to stick specifically to the veto and overriding the veto and not the 14452 Young Street or transitional housing or shelter, okay?
Despite this veto clear rejection, certain counselors continue to push for this flawed project, trying to overturn the veto. And who are these counselors? Rachel Gillen, Wendy Gardner, Ron Wees, and John Gallo. The same four who voted to give themselves substantial pay raises while hard-working families in Aurora are struggling with rising living costs.
Point of order? What? Point of order? Counselor, point of order?
This proposal is a standard process.
I got a point of order. Point of order?
Mr. Mayor, you know what it is. You should be stopping it when it starts. You don't need me to do a point of order.
I do need you guys to do point of order.
Stop the speaker. You've done it before. You can stop.
Thank you. Ms. Chen, continue if I can remind you to be respectful. Go ahead.
Now, Counselor Gallo supported Aurora official plan in the past and actually served as vice chair at the official plan review committee. He supported sustainable growth and preserving green spaces. I respect that.
Point of order, Counselor? Ms. Chen, if I can get you to stick to the veto or the overriding of the veto?
This is war on the people, a betrayal of our trust. What and what, why, and what backroom deals are being made?
Point of order, Counselor Garner? Hey, Ms. Chen, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down. Thank you very much for coming this evening. Next, I have Linda Ma, resident regarding item 6.1. Linda? Welcome. If I can just get you to stick to the veto or the overriding of the veto?
Okay. So my name is Linda Ma. I live in Warford. I represent Aurora United with over 3,000 Aurora taxpayers. Today, I want to talk about should we do the veto or override veto? Okay. Definitely, this is not right plan one years ago. After they wasted 1.2 million to propose the plan, it is not right plan now as we are in the tariff war. We're expecting massive job loss. Aurora residents demand action, and mayor listened. He vetoed the motion to prioritize the task which creating jobs, strengths small business, and support economic growth. That is the right decision of the community. So that's why we need to stick with the veto to put the priority. And as a hard worker taxpayer, I have no shame standing here calling for reasonable spending. That's why I want to say, why I'm saying we need to stick to the veto, because the shelter is not effective, and the shelter has continued fail to reduce or prevent homelessness. Okay, so I have to talk about the reason why I do veto. I cannot stay five minutes here saying, oh, we have to stick a veto. I have told the reason. You need to let me know the reason, and then have my conclusion. Am I right?
Everybody, everybody. Linda, I just need you to stick to the veto, and I understand, but unfortunately, I'm going to hold everybody. I'm talking both sides. I'm also talking council as well. So everyone's just going to be able to discuss the veto or overturning the veto, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm here trying to say we need to stick veto, because that's Aurora residents' voice. Why we have this voice? Because we're saying shelter is not working because of the continual fail to reduce or prevent homelessness. Despite the continued government funding, the demand for shelter keep rising, proving shelter cannot address the root cause of do little to help individual become self-sufficient. Provide a free shelter, even access to substances without any motivation, remove any motivation for individual seeking recovery and become self-sufficient.
Excuse me.
Yes, Counselor Garner?
Excuse me. I welcome you all to the council chamber. It's the place where you can express your views.
Counselor, 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 what? What is it?
We are not discussing the shelter. We are discussing the mayor's use of strong mayor.
Counselor, is it a... It's a point of order. How long have you been doing this? You don't discuss back and forth with a delegate. Are you calling a point of order? Everybody, please calm down. We need to get through this meeting, please.
Thank you.
Counselor, to the chair.
Mr. Chair, this is a point of order. We're not here to discuss the shelter, and we have discussed this in this chamber. Excuse me. Excuse me. We're not going to get through this meeting if we keep having to interrupt. If you have something to say about the mayor's use...
Everyone, please have respect for counsel, please. Counselor, to the chair, not to the chair.
About your use, Mr. Mayor, of veto. Other than that, please stop the delegates from speaking about anything other than that.
I think there's some instances where they're trying to explain why they support the veto or not, so there has to be a little bit of veto. But Linda, go ahead. If I can just get you to stick to the veto and the overriding of the veto, please.
Yes, so that's why I can spend five minutes here, stick with the veto, stick with the veto, if you want to hear. I will say that. But the thing is, the people won't have an opinion, right? The purpose of bringing the resident here to speak, because we want to tell you the reason. What's the reason to be here to speak of our idea? And we also want to build this beautiful, stronger Aurora. That's why we're here. So that's why I can spend five minutes, stick with the veto, stick with the veto, stick with the veto if you want. I can do that. But the thing is, you need, like we express our idea, I can stick with the veto, continue five minutes, I'm fine.
Is that?
Oh, yes.
Is that all, Linda? Is that all?
Yes.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and refer? Counselor Gallo, thank you, secondary. Counselor Thompson, any questions for the delegate? Seeing none. Thank you very much, Linda. Call the vote. Next, we have 5.3. Oh. Counselor Garner? Counselor Garner's, yes? That carries. One sec, sir. Next up, 5.3 Ke Kitlee, resident regarding item 6.1. Welcome. You have five minutes, and if I can just, as I've said, you can stick to the veto or overriding the veto. Thank you.
Good evening, dear honorable mayor, dear counselors, staff, and all people here in the community. Tonight, my name is Ke Kitlee. I represent Sanch United Aurora, which has 3,000 members voting. And next year election, there will be 7,500 of us all. And tonight here, we want to come here to tell you our mayor is a voice for many reasons. Number one, he is upholding the dual process and democratic integrity and transparency. On the very night that you have a meeting on February 25th, 2025, there's a letter from the general counsel, the solicitor of the York Region, stating in his letter that this matter we talk about has been dealt with in the year prior, February 24, and the region decided not to go to Ontario Land Tribunal to appeal. Instead, they decided to move on accordance to the site plan in 2021, which include paving the parking lot for the trailhead and the parkland, as well as planting trees and shrubs. Altogether, total more than 300. I have asked the council staff to put my photographs up here. Maybe they can do that, so I can show you what the York Region has already done. You see all the trees there that's planted? And the next one, I hope I can see below, because really, this is next to the sewage pumping station. And between the sewage pumping, yes, yes. See, and you see the corner there, that's the sewage pumping. And on that side there, that's the trailhead. I went there. It's beautiful. The parkland is beautiful. And this parking is for everybody here to go to the trail and enjoy yourselves. And this in accordance to the town urban planning that we have up in Aurora, Town of Aurora, Young Street South, which you have under the attachment in today's meeting called the OPA 34. Why I say that? Because in OPA 34, page 68 and 69, you will clearly see that this corridor called Young Street Corridor is between Bloomington all the way to the Canadian National Railway. We call it CNR. This region is called the heritage, and that's why it's only allowed low density, only two residents per acre. And for this reason, the mayor did the right thing to uphold to super mayor's power, because the council is heading in the wrong direction. When you have the letter from York Region on the same night telling you that they already heard your desire, they already tell you what they decided to do. No go ahead, no turning back. When you play a basketball, when you play a softball or gray cup, somebody win the team, can you say that, hey, wait a minute, I want to change the coach, I want to change the players, let's do it again. Can you do that?
Sir?
This is not the...
If I can just get you to the chair.
We come here, we think our mayor is the most intelligent man. I understand the urban principles.
Everybody, please.
And I want to remind you, he is a member, a respected member of the York Region itself. So he is representing us in many levels of the government, and I do respect each and every counselors. And that's why this morning, I sent an email to all of you. Some, you respond. Some, you just ignore me. But in essence, I'm telling you the concern of us 3,000 taxpayers, a meeting like this is redundant. We come here to support the mayor. Because of this reason, the Premier of Ontario has decreed this law, super mayor power, because he doesn't want people to be running around in circles, in circle. At the end, we pay.
Counselor? Lee, you're at your five minutes. That's five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you. I have to cut you off. Okay, thank you. Counselor, can I? Can I get a motion to receive and refer? Pardon? Motion to receive and refer. Counselor Thompson, Counselor Kim, Counselor Gillen?
I comment that while we do have this process that this is not a redundant meeting, this is the process that's been in place bestowed by the province when we have a veto. And just for clarity, the project was not to be built where the parking lot is, but rather to the south of that, so that wouldn't have changed regardless. Just want to make sure the information is correct.
Call the vote. Counselor Garner's, yes? That carries. Next, we have Harbinder Tandy, resident regarding item 6.1. Andy, welcome. You have five minutes, and if I can get you to stick to veto or overriding the veto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the counselors, and everybody that came out here today. Sticking to talking about this veto, it's hard to talk about it without talking about democracy. Democracy is a government by people, a government in which the supreme power is vested in the people and exercised by them directly or indirectly through a system of representation. That is what us Auroraans have come to expect here today. That is what the mayor has been trying to give the residents of Aurora. By using the strong mayor powers, this isn't something that we should be proud of. We should actually be sad that he had to use these powers. This isn't something to celebrate. Strong mayor powers can be used for transit, roads, utilities, and servicing in the relation to construction and maintaining infrastructure to support housing, including transit, roads, utilities, and servicing. These are all of the reasons why our mayor has reiterated, whether it be in person, or whether it be through Facebook, whether it be through other means of trying to speak to us Auroraans and let us know what is the reason why he had to use his strong mayor powers, not to mention that he is the only member here that actually sits on the York Housing Board. So I want to thank a couple of counselors for sticking with the mayor through this tough time. It's very, very difficult. And I especially want to thank the other counselors, because they've united Aurora. And I do believe that there's counselors today that are voting against this veto that actually agree with the veto.
Strong mayor powers are anti-democratic and contrary to a counselor's job to represent their residents. I am definitely opposed to strong mayor powers in any municipality. I would like to propose, as the delegates suggested, I would support you using your strong mayor power to ensure protection of the march.
Then we stop the flip-flop, guys, and stick in the hunt, and let's get this done. Let's find these most vulnerable a place to live. Let's actually do something right and find a proper suitable location instead of rehashing and wasting everybody's time over and over again. Thank you.
And a motion to receive and refer. Counselor Thompson? Counselor Garner, thank you. Any question? Call the vote. That carries. Next, we have Joe Vesia, resident regarding item 6.1. Joe? Welcome. You have five minutes, and if I can get you to stick to veto or the overturning of the veto?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors, for giving me the opportunity to share my opinion. My name is Joe Vesia, and I'm a taxpaying resident, Ward 4 resident. I totally support the mayor's veto. I will leave my emotions aside and strictly speak to the facts. At the February 13, 2024, public council meeting, we went through a democratic process, and the location was voted down 4 to 3. Since then, York Region has stated that they do not support any action before the Ontario Land Tribune regarding the region's zoning bylaw amendment application for the proposed location. Therefore, York Region did not appeal the February 2024 council 4 to 3 decision. Sometimes, we got to remember this, that sometimes in Q2 of 2025, York Region will be presenting regional council with the result of a region-wide selection. Let them do their job. Last fall, the proposed location was paved and York Region planted over 300 trees and shrubs. My question to you is, why are we here? Why are these four counselors asking York Region to spend millions on building a new shelter in Aurora when York Region owns buildings that can and should be repurposed? Why are the mayor of Newmarket?
Joe, can I get you to stick to the veto and the overriding of the veto, please?
Okay, so I'll take out that. I had a paragraph regarding the mayor of Newmarket and Blue Door, Michael.
No.
But I'm going to eliminate that. These four counselors are in favor of pursuing this location. They have continued to push for this location, and it was vetoed down. That was vetoed down in 2024. To these counselors, I have this to say to you. Instead of causing division within our community...
It's a point of order, Counselor.
You need to...
There was no decisions that were vetoed down in 2024.
Sure, there was.
I think it's 2025.
In 2024? It was not vetoed. It was voted down in 2024. I apologize. Thank you for correcting me. To these four counselors, I have this to say. Instead of causing division within our community, which you are doing, you should instead invest your time and energy on making Aurora a better place to live for your taxpaying residents. Thank you for your time.
And a motion to receive and refer. Counselor Garner, thank you. Counselor Thompson? Seeing no questions, call the vote. That carries. Next, we have Frank Ni, resident regarding item 6.1. Frank, welcome. You have five minutes, sir. And if I can, it'll turn up there. It's on, and you have five minutes, and if I can get you to stick to veto or overriding the veto, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Ni. I lived in Ward 2. So I've been moved to Aurora for five years. So I love this town, and I'm here to support the mayor's veto. You know, like just like Linda said, it's really hard to stick only the veto, 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 veto. I have to explain the reasons. I have to get something to the shelter, but I will try my best to add less of that, okay? So since last, next slide, please. Since the last meeting, like our community has been divided. You know, social media has turned into battlefield. We can see like neighbors fight with each other. But here's the thing, if we dare to say no, we suddenly tend to be hard-coded, cold-hearted, and even accused of violating the human rights. But let me ask, since when did saying no become wrong? Don't we have the right to a town that serving best the best interests of us? Saying no doesn't make us bad guys. It means we care about our town, our families, and our future. It means we want a solution that works for everyone, because every single resident matters. Um, next, next slide, please. Thank you. Now, I want to be clear. I get it. I truly understand why some of you support this idea. Homelessness is a real problem. And it's hard to see people struggling on the street. They deserve our help, our compassion, and our action. But here's the truth. Good attention are not enough. How many times have we seen good attentions backfire finally? Take California, for example. Next slide. Thank you.
Frank, I'm asking you to pull it in and come back to veto, overriding veto, please.
Okay.
We're not here to talk about California. I can't get, we, we're not here to talk about California and the things that are happening. I appreciate, I appreciate.
Just example, okay.
California has its own problems. We don't, we don't need to talk about California.
You're right. Okay. So let's stick on the veto. So my reason I, the reason I'm here to support the veto is because I just want to ask, can we think of something bigger? Is a shelter the best solution for the homeless people? Studies from cities like Toronto show that when homeless individuals are more supported in their own community.
Frank, I need you to, I need you to come back. I can't let you continue on. And if, if this, the rest of the.
Okay, last pair of, nothing to do with the, okay, yeah. So, I mean, the mayor veto is something something really represents our ideas. It's not about saying no to helping people. It's about saying yes to a better solution. That's why I stand with mayor's veto. Let's not just do what's easy. Let's do what's better. Let's build a united Aurora where every voice is heard and valued. Not just because we have two, but because we must do the right thing and do it right. Thank you.
Okay. And motion to receive and refer. Councillor Thompson. Seconder. Councillor Kim, any questions? Seeing none. Call the vote. Councillor Gardner. Councillor Gardner's yes. That carries. Next, we have Costabel Carpagnelli. Welcome. You just got five minutes and if I can get you to stick to veto or overriding the veto. Thank you.
Costabel Carpagnelli, I'm resident of Wood Day in Aurora. I apologize. I have five minutes. My point why I stick with the support of a major veto stays at the end. So apologize if you need to follow up a little bit my process, why I supported the veto, um, the veto. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember, mayor, and fellow resident of Aurora. I send strong, strong support of, uh, the mayor veto of on the proposed transitional housing project of 144, 14452 Young Street. This decision is in the best interest of our town, our residents, and our future. Violation of due process. First, we must acknowledge the fundamental issue. This proposal was already voted down, yet it's being reopened. This is guarding, this gathering the due process and the voice of Aurora residents. Our community spoke. Our representative made a decision ignoring this decision, not only disrespect to the process, but also the people who took the time to express their concern. Mismanagement of taxpayers' dollars. A pressing concern is the staggering of $1.2 million in taxpayer money that York Region has already spent on designing a five-story building, a five-story shelter for a location that has been, has faced planning doubts from the very beginning due to the density restriction. Why was this significant expenses approved without a clear contingency plan? A year ago, when York Region was asked about alternative options, the response was, we don't have a Plan B. This response is unassailable. It raises serious question, who approved such a costly study for a project that was already at risk of failing? How was over $1 million allocated for a study without ensuring feasibility for, uh, for the location? This is a blatant example of poor leadership and financial mismanagement. Taxpayer money should not be spent recklessly. York Region should have considered alternative solution from the start. Poor planning and lack of viable alternatives. Let's examine why this location was chosen. The land is questioned in question is limited density, allowing for only eight units and does not permit commercial residents developing. Instead of recognizing these constraints, York Region pushed for a word with a shelter plan simply because it was convenient, not because it was the best solution. This is a prime example of poor planning. A more effective approach would have been reassess existing shelter with, within the GTA, particularly in Newmarket, where data shows a significantly higher number of homeless individuals compared to the Aurora. By reallocating resources to ensure a specific facility, we could improve the quality of living of those already in shelter. I've ordered necessary expenses on brand new project and sure financial accountability. Some have claimed that no other suitable land are available. This argument is weak. If we can approve a large development infrastructure project across the region, we can certainly find a more appropriate site for this initiative. Community safety concern. Another critical issue is the shelter proximity and to an L C B O. Will this facility be open to individuals struggling with alcohol dependency? I'm getting there. I have five minutes. You got two years, you got two years to talk about this. I have five minutes. Please let me read at the end. You'll understand why.
I do need you, I do need you to come.
I will, I will get there. Every single paragraph, there is the reason why I'm, I'm reading it.
I, I can't allow you to continue unless you get to the point of veto.
I have five minutes, right? If so, why this, why this proximity of to a liquor store not, not a factor with the decision-making process? So that's why I support the veto. That's why I support the veto because the mayor is reading.
I have, Mr. Kim, I have to, I have to stop you at this point. No, I can't, I can't allow you. I, please. Sir. I, I get it. I, I, I've turned off your mic. I'm gonna move on. I've, I have point of orders. I appreciate it. Receive and refer. Receive and refer councillor Thompson. Seconder. Councillor Kim, thank you. Call the vote. Councillor Gardner's yes. That carries. Next, we have Shaheen Moldina. Shaheen, welcome. Welcome. You have five minutes and if I can get you to stick to veto or overturning the veto, please.
Honorable mayor, councillors, senior staff, and the town of Aurora. Aurora is a very unique town, a bedroom community, and we protect where we live, work, play, and pray by helping each other. And it doesn't matter what ward you live in. A lot of us know each other by name. But today I'm here to ask you to stop dividing us and allowing this veto to stand. Like thousands of my fellow residents, we don't understand why it, this, this application keeps coming back when York Region itself is not interested in the site.
Councillor Gillan.
They themselves have said.
Point of order, councillor Gillan, go ahead.
For clarification, the region did not say they were not interested. I, I don't want delegates saying incorrect information. The region did not say they were not interested in this site.
Now.
Um.
Everyone, please, councillor, first of all, just from a procedural standpoint, there's no such thing as a point of clarification. It's either a point of order or a question of privilege. Councillor Gillan.
Ask that the facts, we stick to the facts.
I agree. I'd like to see facts. We'll see what comes up soon.
Through the chair, I'd like to remind council that in several newspaper articles, York Region has said they will not go to the O L T. And they are, I'm sorry.
Veto overriding.
Okay, I'm just answering the, the councillor's.
I get it. No, I don't. There, there was no time to have a question. We do that at the end, but I just need you to stick to the veto or the override.
I will stick to the veto. I have, I have the following questions through the chair. Why is it okay to use the veto sometimes and not sometimes? Doesn't make sense to me. The province has given this smart, oh, super, what is it? The strong mayor powers to you for a reason, for infrastructure. Okay, so I don't understand, and many of us don't understand why we're, we have to come here and fight again and again and again. Okay? And I, I fundamentally don't understand why the councillors are not listening to us. I also don't understand why is there so much misinformation on social media in regards to this motion? The conduct of council has been deplorable. Many of us came.
Councillor, yeah.
Horrible actions he's referring to.
I'm not gonna ask the, the.
Then ask her to refrain from those types of comments.
Thank you. Shane, can I, if I can get you to refrain from those types of.
Okay, so I feel that council is creating division among the town of Aurora instead of uniting us with this special meeting. And so I'm not going to, this motion also fosters unrealistic expectations for Aurora regarding the situation and misleads the community. So I thank the, the mayor for using his strong mayor powers to veto this situation because it's gone beyond what we expect as taxpayers.
I get a motion to receive and refer councillor Thompson, seconder. Councillor Weiss. See no questions, call the vote. That carries. Next, we have Jordan Drudge, resident regarding item 6.1. Drudge, welcome. You have five minutes. I can get you to stick to the veto or the overriding of the veto, please.
Good evening. I'm sure by now everybody knows who I am. But since I apparently like to hear the sound of my own voice. My name is Jordan Drudge. I am a lifelong multi-generational resident of Aurora and I am deeply, deeply disturbed by what is transpiring in my hometown. It pains me greatly that this discussion surrounding this critical issue of providing housing for vulnerable people is still going on, ironically, in this very building. A safe space built by others who have gone before us for us.
Everyone, please. Please. So Drudge, continue. If I can get you to speak to the chair, please.
A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they shall never sit in. There are two well-known idioms about power. First is, power corrupts and absolute power corrupts absolutely. The second is a lion cares not the opinions of sheep. On the surface, these sayings might suggest a negative tone of superiority coupled with a lack of empathy. And for most people, this would seem to be the case. It is repeatedly and demonstrably true. These are observable effects on personalities when people acquire various forms of power, such as money or status. What is missing from this equation is the character of the person who has acquired said levels of power. Many people make choices in their lives almost as if they are on autopilot. They encounter ever increasingly complex situations which require ever increasingly complex decisions to be made, often with heated feelings and mixed emotions.
Point of order. Thank you, councillor Gallo. Drudge, if I can get you to speak to the veto or the overriding of the veto, please.
It is easy to understand how someone in that situation can experience overwhelm and thus have their decision-making abilities compromised. Much like a snowball rolling downhill, the consequences of these decisions can compound exponentially and can go either way. Deleterious effects can pile up.
You want me to shut it down? Mr. Drudge, if, if, if I, if I don't get you to speak about the veto or the overriding the veto, I'm gonna have to end your delegation.
I am getting, if.
I, okay, hopefully we get there.
Thank you.
I'll give you one more opportunity. Go ahead.
Deleterious effects can pile up just as easily as positive growth can. Our politicians and other professionals experience this every day they step out of their house. They are continually under immense and unrelenting pressure to deliver, oftentimes to people who may not fully comprehend the massive amount of time and resources it requires to satisfy their often unrealistic expectations and of course, to do it with a smile on their face.
Everyone, please, please.
Of course, there are also people who simply have not yet learned the grace of being grateful. Much like an athlete, they are expected to perform at the highest levels all of the time for everyone to witness regardless of what is happening, what may be happening in their personal lives.
I'll miss that one. Mr. Drudge, I'm gonna have to end your delegation at this point. Thank you. Yeah, motion to receive and refer councillor Gallo, councillor Thompson. Any questions? Call the vote. That carries. Next, we have Mr. Steve Fleck, resident regarding item 6.1. Fleck, welcome. You have five minutes. I'll remind you veto or overriding the veto, please.
Thank you, your worship. My name is Steve Fleck. My wife, Aurora Sports Hall of Fame member Paulina Allen and I, who's in the gallery tonight, have, uh, lived in Aurora for 20 years. Mayor Morakas, members of council, my fellow citizens of Aurora in the gallery, thank you for your time. We're here tonight to talk about the override of the mayor's veto of the item 9.1 from the council meeting of February the 25th. But what we are really here tonight to talk about is democracy and respect for human rights. On human rights, I hold here in my hand two letters of warning addressed to the mayor of Aurora and Aurora council from the Human Rights Commissioner, the second letter coming after the veto recently. My understanding that it's a bit unprecedented to receive not one, but two of these letters from the commissioner. Just consider for a moment that decisions.
Everyone, please, 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 please.
Just consider for a moment that decisions have been made here in this community, maybe in violation of basic human rights and the Ontario Human Rights Code. Shifting to democracy.
Mr. Fleck, I need you to stick specifically to veto. You're, what you're discussing is not the veto or overriding the veto, please.
You received a letter, mayor, from the Ontario Human Rights Commission.
It's got nothing to do with the veto. I have councillors asking me. Mr. Fleck, I have councillors asking me for point of order. I need you to stick to veto or overriding the veto.
All right, we'll move on. In a democracy, democracy is under threat internationally, nationally, here in Canada, and even locally here in Aurora. In September 2023.
I take a recess if everyone doesn't relax and take it easy. Let the, let us get through these delegations so that we can get to the business here, which is what you're all here for, is to hear the result from council. You want to hear the result that's gonna happen here. So let's get through this. Let Mr. Fleck speak, let the rest of the speakers speak. Let's be respectful of each other. Okay, so we can get through this together. Okay? Mr. Fleck, go ahead. Veto or overriding the veto?
Thank you, your worship. In September 2023, prior to the full. In September 2023, prior to the full adoption of strong mayor powers and the veto power here in Aurora on a motion. From councillor Wies questioning the validity, but I stood before you in this space and said the following. The adoption of strong mayor powers and the veto power here in Aurora would eliminate one of the most fundamental principles of our system of democracy parliamentary and government procedures that in all situations, a majority shall rule and that majority shall be respected. If we don't have that, what do we have? We'll be way out on a very slippery slope where a minority of people would have the ultimate say over the majority. That is undemocratic and completely unacceptable to me, end quote. My feelings on. The veto and the strong mayor powers is unchanged. It's undemocratic and it's warping and distorting. The governance here in Aurora. Democracy is not something you turn on or off. You are all in on it all the time. Sometimes in democracy, it does not always go the way you want it to, and that's okay. Sometimes in a democracy, we lose the race or the vote, and that's okay. The rules of the game were in place. In the end, democracy was respected. But if that political win comes when the rules of the game and democracy are tossed aside and into the ditch. Where are we at? Not to get overly dramatic here, but our four.
No, no, there's still one minute. He still has one minute. Go ahead.
Strong mayor powers was implemented by and offered to mayors in in Ontario by the Ontario provincial government ostensibly to speed up the pace of building new homes and housing of all kinds. In municipalities all across the province in the face of the housing crisis. To the best of my knowledge, it's never been used for that purpose here in Aurora and ironically, just last week, strong mayor powers and veto powers was used here in Aurora indirectly to impede. The progress of some potential housing being built. In closing, I was asked over the weekend by a contact in Aurora, what team am I on with this? I said without hesitation, I'm on the team that fully respects human rights and democracy. That should be really, really easy choice to make, I would think. Do we want Aurora to be known as a community that fully respects human rights and democracy or not? My Aurora, your Aurora, and our Aurora should always fully respect human rights and democracy.
Can I get? Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and refer? Allow what? I'm trying, councillor. I'm not clearing the chambers, councillor. You you we talk about transparency, public, we have the public here. I I am. Motion to receive and refer. Motion to receive and refer councillor Kim, councillor Thompson, any questions? Call the vote. That carries. Next, we have five point eleven Susan Shaw resident regarding six point one. Ms. Shaw, welcome. Ms. Shaw, you have five minutes. If I can just get you to stick to veto or the overriding of the veto, please. Thank you.
Thank you. I kind of feel like I'm in the lion's den here tonight. My name is Susan Shaw. My husband and I have been residents of Aurora since buying our first home here in 1977. I'm speaking tonight in opposition of the mayor's veto veto of item nine point one. At the February 25th council meeting. I have three questions for consideration by the mayor that will hopefully provide clearer focus to the justifications that he used for enacting his strong mayor powers to veto the council vote. First off, what is the mayor's current vision of Aurora as a supportive community that provides a place and home for all? Does your vision, your honour, still align with your statement of April 29th, 2019? In which you speak of the staggering numbers of homeless people, this is a quote. Within York region. You acknowledged on that date that, quote, homelessness is right here in our communities. You acknowledge that, quote, homelessness, homeless, sorry. You acknowledge that homeless people come from all walks of life. But have suffered a significant life event. They've lost their job. They've suffered a critical illness and have either lost their home or can no longer afford. Um, to rent one, unquote. In addition to the homeless, you confirmed, Mr. Mayor, that there are many more in a financially precarious position and all it could take is missing.
Residents earlier who couldn't talk about the shelter, to be fair.
We shouldn't be talking. Ms. Shaw, if I can get you back to the veto and the overriding of the veto.
I'm just trying to clarify your reasons for your your veto, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely, that's fine.
Okay, so my question on that point is, do you still support the regional initiative on homelessness and believe that Aurora should work to this goal? Second, if your vision is housing for all and thereby including housing opportunities for all. Uh, why has the town, I'm probably veering off here, why is the town not provided more rental housing in the recent years? And why, after supporting a region's selection of a candidate site? In the south end of Aurora, do you suddenly, did you suddenly veto the council's latest vote on the matter? I know that you justified your vote by stating the site has been designated for other more important infrastructure purposes. But have those other more important purposes been approved by the region? Or the town? Is it not the role of the region to determine whether the site still fits its well-researched criteria for a men's shelter and transition centre? It seems unethical to use this reason without having input and confirmation from the region on its designated purpose for their property. In an online post a few days ago, which seems to have been deleted, you also justified your strong mayor vote veto, song mayor power. Strong mayor's power veto by declaring that you speak for the people. Can you, excuse me, can you tell us tonight which people you were speaking for when you cast your veto? It wasn't me. It wasn't many residents who are here tonight.
And everyone, please. I do not want to clear the chamber. You are here. Let's, as I mentioned, let's get through this, please. Shaw.
You were not speaking for me. You were not speaking for any many other residents that are here tonight or who are watching tonight from their home. Were you speaking for the residents who apparently did a random and unauthorized evaluation of the property? And posted their opinion online that it was totally unsuitable for a men's shelter? Were you representing those people, sir? I suggest that the site evaluation is the role of the region, not unqualified citizens.
Please, please, everyone, please let Ms. Shaw finish.
My third point, does the mayor's vision of community and housing for all residents meet the principles contained in the two letters of February 22 and March 11 from the Human Rights? The Ontario Human Rights Commission, which state that the delay or denial of this project may be discriminatory under the Human Rights Code. The four-year delay has also been questioned as being discriminatory. And the commission urges urges the town of Aurora to consider all viable options to fulfill its obligation to provide transitional housing. Your honour. The town has, do you agree that the town has an obligation under the OHRC to share in the provision of housing for the homeless within York region? If so, why did you veto the vote on the proposal for 11452 Young Street? If it was simply due to the wording of the motion, which was another complaint that you had. That should be an easy and simple fix. Get the correct wording. Ask council to put the site back on the list and await the region's assessment of that site compared to all other candidate sites. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to receive and refer? Councillor Gardner. Councillor Thompson. Call the vote. That carries. Thank you. Everyone, please, everyone, please. Next. When next, everyone, please, next. Next speaker, Wendy Moravitis. Wendy, welcome. You have five minutes. Everyone, can I please have quiet, please?
Thank you. My name is Wendy Moravitis. I've lived in Aurora with my family for 28 years and I believe in democracy. I've paid taxes for those 28 years in this town. I'm a supporter of Aurora Cares Housing for All. I'm also a volunteer with Fair Vote Canada, which is a countrywide, which is a countrywide grassroots organization working for electoral reform in the provinces and the federal government. I believe that democracy in this country, this province, and this town can be better. I'm here to express my disappointment that Mayor Morakas, the mayor of this town, vetoed the approved February 25 motion to reconsider the housing proposal. That motion was approved by a majority of the elected municipal officials in this council chamber. Which means it was approved by elected representatives for the majority of the people in Aurora. In the 2022 municipal election campaign, Mayor Mayor Morakas said strong mayor powers were not necessary and not needed. He used them twice in 24 and now once in 25 to overrule majority council decisions. I expect my political leaders to actively support democracy in a world which is rapidly becoming more complicated. We have to be able to trust our leaders to make transparent decisions for the benefit of the whole community. We have to be able to. To trust our leaders to be the guardians of our collective future. We have to be able to trust our leaders to have open and inclusive discussions. On those decisions to ensure they reached a considered and meaningful conclusion for the greater good. I don't see that in the use of a veto which delays development of much-needed support for people who are struggling in our community. In his February 26 mayoral decision, Mayor Morakas clarified he used the veto since the location is critical for infrastructure development in southwest Aurora and along Young Street. I am confused about the fact that Mayor Morakas used the word may twice when referencing that infrastructure need. Surely, infrastructure for that area must be in our plan in 2025 if we are in alignment with Ontario housing priorities. I have two requests today. I request that the written plan for the infrastructure development in this area be shared with the residents of Aurora so we can. So we can all properly understand how it will develop in alignment with the goal of Ontario Regulation 58022. Building 1.5 million new residential units by December 31, 2031. Until that is transparently shared and that alignment is clear, I request all councillors. Vote to overturn this veto. Democracy requires action. I know what my action will be in the next municipal election. I will spread the word on what I've learned in these in recent months about the function of this council chamber. And I will vote for a ward four councillor and a mayor who demonstrate their support for democracy. Thank you.
I had a motion to receive and refer. Councillor Gallo, councillor Wies. Call the vote. That carries. Next, we have. And our last delegate, five point one three Sally Haber. Sally. Sally, welcome. You have five minutes. And if I can just get you to stick to veto or overriding the veto, please.
Yes. My name is Sally Haber and I've lived, paid taxes and voted in Aurora since 1969. I will keep my comments brief because most of them will be shouted down. Um, I'm asking that the mayor withdraw his unlawful veto or that council override the veto. The National Housing Strategy, which received royal assent in 2019, states that all people. Have the right to live somewhere in security, peace and dignity, according to the United Nations. It requires the government to implement reasonable policies and programs to ensure the right to housing for all. Within the shortest possible timeframe. It also means priority must be given to vulnerable groups and those in greatest need of housing. One last thought, I hope you'll permit me. To leave with you is that a large percentage of the homeless are people with special needs. Many of you on council and you, Mr. Mayor, know that our daughter is among that group. She has a good job and gets some government support. But many of her friends are young men who can't get a job. The daily worry for their parents is what will happen after the parents die. They could never afford market rent. Group homes are limited and limiting. Even the shabbiest illegal basement apartment in Aurora is unaffordable. The waitlist for subsidized housing is 10 to 15 years. They should not have to leave their hometown to seek shelter. Or to die at the ghost station where one young man. Recently died in the bitter cold of January. That's where he slept. He had lived in an encampment near the railroad tracks behind Aurora Co-op. But one day he went out and his whole encampment, his tent was taken and cleared away. This should not be happening. In one of the richest towns in Canada. Thank you.
Yep. Can I get a motion to receive and refer? Councillor Gardner, second councillor Thompson. Call the vote. That carries. So we're gonna move to items for discussion, six point one, which is the override of the mayor's veto of item nine point one, February 2025. Council meeting, um, someone want to move the recommendation? Councillor Gallo, second or councillor Wies? Comments, questions? Councillor Gallo, go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to express my serious concerns regarding the use of strong mayor's powers by Mayor Morakas to veto a decision made by this council. The actions threatens the democratic integrity of our municipality. First, let's take a moment to recall the purpose of the strong mayor's powers as introduced by the provincial government. The province established smart mayor powers to to achieve two main goals. First, to build 1.5 million homes by 2031 and second, to. To construct and maintain the necessary infrastructure to support uh this housing. These goals are critical for Ontario's housing future and we are all agree that addressing the homeless crisis is an important priority. The motion that was vetoed is in direct alignment with those goals. The intent of strong mayor's powers was never to allow mayors to override the decisions made by elected municipal councillors that align with those goals. These powers were meant to facilitate progress toward provincial housing objectives, not to stop them. During the last election campaign, Mayor Morakas made a clear and unequivocal commitment to the residents of Aurora. He promised that he would not use strong mayor's powers. Yet, once Aurora had added the list of municipalities where the mayor could accept these powers, he chose to do so, despite the fact that the majority of council did not support strong mayor powers. Mr. Mayor. Mayor Marakas decided to accept those powers anyway. The decision to implement strong mayor powers in Aurora was made against the wishes of the majority of this council. By invoking these powers to veto a decision we made, the mayor has overruled the will of the majority and duly elected representatives of Aurora. This is a dangerous precedent that we cannot stand. Allowed to stand. Let me be clear, there is no other established democracy in the world that I'm aware of where laws can be passed or decisions made by a minority of elected officials. The mayor's veto in this case surpasses, bypasses the decisions of the majority of council council. This is an affront to democratic principles and a direct violation of the system of governments. We hold dear. When we allow one individual to exercise unchecked authority in this way, we risk undermining the entire fabric of our democratic system. In my 14 years of service on council, under three different mayors, I have never witnessed a blatant abuse of power. I have been.
Question of privilege, councillor, question of privilege. There is no abuse of power. Mr. Sario. Is the veto a legal allowed tool through legislation by the province?
To you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it is. Under the Municipal Act, it was amended to allow these strong mayor powers.
Thank you. Councillor. Councillor, I'll give you an opportunity to apologize not only to myself but this council and to everyone in this room for making a statement that is is absolutely unfounded accusations.
Right, I. I apologize for accusing you of blatant abuse of power. I have been part of many passionate debates and differences of opinion. But we have always respected the process, respected the will of the majority, and worked together for the benefit of the community. The mayor argues that the proposed use of the property at 14452 Young Street for a men's emergency and transitional shelter could compromise the strategic purpose and interfere with the delivery of infrastructure needed to support housing. However, the 2019 York Region report, which the mayor is using to justify his veto, contains one single sentence stating, "The acquisition of the subject lands will also make it available for any future capacity needs for the Henderson SPS." The mayor is misrepresenting this language. Nowhere in the report does it explicitly state that this land must be reserved exclusively for future infrastructure. The report does not support the mayor's interpretation. In fact, a spokesperson from York Region has clarified recently that the new sewage pumping station will alleviate the capacity constraints, allowing for an additional capacity of 4,500 people, supporting both current and future servicing needs for growth in Aurora. This clearly indicates that there is no infrastructure concern preventing the proposed shelter from being built on the land. The mayor's interpretation seems to be a personal opinion rather than a reflection of the official regional planning guidelines. We must not allow the mayor's personal opinion or his interpretation of a single sentence from a regional report to block a project that serves the greater good of our community. We must respect the will of the majority of council, who made this decision after careful consideration. And we must resist the use of strong mayor's powers or override decisions of council. The use of strong mayor's powers in this instance represents a dangerous and undemocratic approach to governance. It disregards the will of this council, disrespects the principles of democracy, and ignores the need of our most vulnerable residents. We cannot allow this to continue. I urge my fellow councillors to stand up for the principles of democracy and local governments. Let us ensure that decisions are made by the majority and not by one individual wielding unchecked power.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? I call the vote. All right, calling the vote. Just so everyone has an understanding, if you are in favor of overriding the veto, you are voting yes. If you are in favor of upholding the veto, you are voting no. I called the vote. Procedure by law, I'm sorry. You guys can't sit there and wait. I've told you guys this so many times. I called the vote. I already locked in my vote. We're voting. Procedure by law, once the chair calls the vote, Mr. Clerk?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yeah. Once the chair calls the vote, the vote is on. There's no way to go back without revealing the votes.
Thank you.
Once the vote's been called, the vote should tick this.
I'm not doing it. I've told you guys many times on this, and you guys continue to do this. Nope, I voted already. I'm calling the vote. I called the vote. Please vote, everyone. Please vote. I've called the vote. There is no debate during, once the vote has been called. Is in our procedural bylaw? If you are in favor of overriding the veto, you are voting yes. Okay? If you want to override my veto, you are voting yes. Please vote. That fails. Counsel, I have one more item. This is an informational item. Can I get a motion to receive it for information? Counselor Gallow, second. Counselor Weiss. Any questions? Call the vote. That carries. Confirming bylaw. Someone want to move that? Counselor Kim, Counselor Thompson. Call the vote. This one's hands, right? Yeah, all those in favor? All those in favor of the confirming bylaw? Posed. That carries. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Kim, Counselor Gallow, all those in favor? Posed, that carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.